Excuse me. I'll make it. Well.
Can you hear?
Yeah, you can hear all right. I don't see the red light. There you go.
Is that picking up? Okay, great. Regular meeting that the city planning commission is called to order. Which please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the Constitution for which it stands. A nation under God indivisible, liberty and justice for all. First order of business is the first order of business is the approval of the agenda.
Yeah, sorry.
Do we have a motion for approval of the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion about the agenda? All those in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The approval of the agenda has agendas approved. In the second quarter of business, the approval of the minutes of the August fifteenth, twenty twenty four regular meeting. Do we have a motion for approval of the minutes? Is there a second?
I'll second.
You've got a motion and a second. All in favor, is there discussion of the minutes? Let me discuss it. If not, all in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. We have two public hearings tonight. The the first is a recommendation on an ordinance for a variance to the regulations of required buffers in the HMMU mixed use Hamlet district. Mike, we'll get to it. I think we want to talk a little bit about what that used to be, but that it wasn't right. Okay. To allow grading and a required buffer on eighty eight acres on the east side of a Lanvin Road just north of the Coita County line. We're going to ask the applicant if the applicant wants to make a presentation, then we'll open the public hearing, but I'm going to read the rules for the public hearing. They're the same as we've had before, but each side is going to have an equal opportunity to the floor, each side being those that are in supporting and those opposing. And we'll establish time limits for this public hearing. I think we'll wait for a minute. I want to, before we establish the time on that, want to see if anybody's signed up. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards were received by the city clerk. All speakers should identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable before beginning their presentation. In this case, each side will say, Mike, do we have any cards? Anybody sign up? We'll say ten minutes for each side to present their case. The applicant may take as much of that a lot of time as they wish and can reserve if they need to. All others speaking in support of or in opposition shall be limited to three minutes per speaker. Now, we can extend the time if if needed. All of those speaking in support of the item will speak first. The applicant may choose to save some of the allotted time for rebuttal following the presentation of the opposition. Those opposing the issue will speak next. If any time remains, the opposition will be allowed to rebut the final remarks made by the applicant. By the way, even though we don't have people speaking who've signed up to speak, I think it's important just to make sure we get the rules on the record. Written comments in support of the issue we read out loud if time remains after all others present at the hearing have spoken. Following the presentations by the applicant, those speaking, well, the city clerk, in this case, Mike Morton will keep track of time and will inform you when your allotted time is expired. During the public hearing, members of the city council shall listen to the presentation made by all those who speak. No action on their part is an order until the chair declares the public hearing complete. So start out, Mr. Morton, would you give us a brief summary of the of the if if there's anything to add on that, if you'd like to, you can give us a summary. If not, it's fine. We'll go to the.
Okay, not much more to say. You did mention the history, so I'll describe a little bit of the history of the project. Some years ago, and let's see, a year or not, the project in mid twenty nineteen was originally approved as something that's not in the zoning anymore. The HM dash SD is a special district hamlet. It was something that we had for a while that was a little more flexible than other hamlets to allow certain uses that were in the interest of the city to be approved if they didn't meet some of the technical requirements, minimum size, ratio of commercial residential, some things like that. And so this was approved in twenty nineteen as a special district hamlet. A couple of years later, special district hamlets were removed from the zoning and it was rezoned to HMMU. So that's why you're getting such a small mixed use hamlet. But the plan that's been submitted by the applicant matches the originally approved concept plan that came with that Hamlet special district. And in order to accommodate that plan, some grading is required and in order for the new grades to match the existing grade, some grading needs to extend into the northern buffer. So that's the application we have in front of us.
Thank you. At this point, we'll open the public hearing. Does the applicant wish to make a presentation? And please identify yourself, name, address, and.
Okay. My name is Hi. I'm engineer. Okay, I'm the engineer on the project. I work for Integrated Science and Engineering. The address of Integrated is ten thirty nine Sullivan Road, Suite two hundred, Nunez, Georgia, three zero two six five. I am here representing TNG community and pretty much what this project is, is it's a development. Again, we are following the approved concept plan for the site. There is significant topography on the site and Cedar Creek and environmental measures. And so we are trying to develop the site on a very small area and with that, there is a little bit of disturbance into the buffer. And with the disturbance, it's about half of the buffer distance and we are tending to replant it to be just as, you know, with additional pines and hardwoods. And it's just a temporary buffer and there's nothing pretty much else being constructed in it except for what was already approved. And that's it.
All right. Thank you. Mike, do we have, you can stay.
Any questions? I don't know.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much. We have no one signed up?
That's correct.
All right, then the public hearing portion of this is closed and let's move to discussion. I I have a question. I think it would be helpful for me at least. Mike, or if you would like to, would you please go to the diagram and point out the buffer area that's to be disturbed? I think it's the blue area, right?
Yes.
And this information is, this information is in the packet.
Okay, oh, sorry, forgot to bring this with me. Um, yeah. The air, the blue is what's intended to be disturbed. This is the the slope that we're going to have to tie back into existing. And then it's it's all going to be graded. We're going to keep this natural buffer and not disturb beyond what we have to grade. And then we're intending to replant this area. And over here, this is what was already approved in the concept and we are just.
And that's this parking area, right?
Yes.
The larger, the the larger part is.
Parking area, which is the parking area of which it's a natural parking area with, you know, with trees, it's going to be natural cover and all.
It's depicted as gravel with the with the various plantings within inside it.
Yes, correct.
Oh, okay. Would you please introduce yourself?
I'm Dominic Love and I've just moved five eighty Tabway, Chautauqua Hill, three oh two six eight, and I am the sponsor of the project or the developer.
We're actually not in public hearing, but I thought it was important for me now. So which now you, in the packet, it said that this company owned their three parcels to the north that adjoin or abut the buffer area that's being disturbed. There are three parcels and apparently the company owns one of them, the one on the on the northwest corner.
The very northwest corner.
The company only owns that, but not the other.
And the other two are not.
The middle one is vacant, is that correct?
I'm correct.
And the third one is, or the other one is is occupied.
The the last one is occupied. Yeah, and 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 then with the last one, this is the property line, I believe, so it's not as significant of a disturbance for that.
Thank you very much. Mike, I've got a couple of questions as well, and that's sort of folks want to jump in right now, but of course, please do. The replanting, Mike, if you, you can please, if you could return.
I can return this. You need to be there.
You have a plan for the replanting?
Yes, it's in the packet.
It's in the pack, the last, the last page of the packet.
That's great.
And can you describe from your standpoint what that's supposed to be? They're going to disturb it and then replant it?
That's right. That's right. So you can see the blue area, the blue area is the area that will be disturbed, will be graded. At the top there, you can see that's repeated in the planting plan. It's white in the planting plan. So they're only disturbing about for most of the buffer, except where the parking lot is, only about half the depth of the buffer. So seventy or eighty feet disturbed, seventy or eighty feet, undisturbed still closest to the nature. The part that they're disturbing, they're showing, excuse me, a planting of mixed native trees, sweet poplar, magnolia, grand flora, which is the southern big leaf magnolia and quercus Georgiana, which is a Georgia oak, a native oak, there are many native oak. You see a whole lot. Nice. And they're showing them, you can see it's a fairly random planting planned, but they're in a depth of two or three, if you look deep, two or three deep, and that's pretty consistent with hardwood planting depth. You expect thirty to forty, maybe even fifty percent, you think of thirty five for typical for an oak. So that's generally the the kind of separation that you would want to allow them to.
Okay. Would you please explain unless we can continue to ask questions, but what is staff recommendation and there are a couple of conditions?
That's right. That's right. That recommendation is for approval of the variance with two conditions. The first is that the buffer will be replanted according to the replanting plan submitted to the Department of Community Development. That's the one in the packet here. In the first appropriate rating, so generally planting seasons here for trees midish February through maybe into too much farther than that. So the first first planting season after the grading is complete. And then the second recommended condition is if any location in the buffer has insufficient vegetation to provide satisfactory screening of the development on the property, the owner of the property shall plant additional native evergreen plants to create an effective buffer. So once it's in, of course, it'll take a little time to mature, but if there are any, any, any obvious problems, we'll, we'll ask them to add a plant or two just to fill in.
I'm going to ask for a motion and then if we get a motion in a second, we can discuss this after the motion of a second. So is there a mo, does anyone have a motion for? I'll make the motion. I I move that we approve the variance request. Is there any discussion?
I still have a, I mean, I, just minor discussion. I'm still a little bit unclear about the nature of the variance in terms of the replanting, if that's the temporary part. Right? I mean, they're gonna go to a clear cut grade, replant the trees. But where the overflow is, the overflow parking is in the buffer.
That's, that's correct, right?
But that is how it's shown on the concept plan.
That's correct.
So is that is that being in the buffer part of this variance or is that considered already fixed?
So the parking, so yeah, it's interesting. I had to talk to them about that a little, a little bit because the, they are proposing a little bit of grading to make the parking lot work. And so we did include it in the variance. The parking lot itself is not a part of the variance because that was a part of the original plan as the special, you know, the special district handle that you could vary some things on without going through the variance process. And but because there is a little bit of grading necessary to make that work, we just asked them to include it as a part of the variance application. So yes, technically, there will be a little bit of grading to make the parking lot work. And so that is the grading that happens there is is part of the, part of the plan. The replanting in in the parking lot or for the parking lot is only as depicted. So they have, you can see there are quite a few tree wells or spot located for trees. We expect trees in those and then you can see on the planting plan, they have some along the edge as well.
Vegetation showing these plants, you think that would meet the intent of the buffer?
Um, to to the degree, yeah, yes, to, you're right, to the degree because of the the way the parking lot was shown in that original plan, right? Normally, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be allowing that to happen there. So I think because of the way it was shown in the original plan and that original approval, the way that they have shown those and they've staggered those, those plantings, I think is the sort of best effort toward toward making that parking lot as as buffery as possible.
Did you get the Robbie Buffery? Did you? Will, did that answer?
That answered my questions. Thank you.
Is there any other further discussion on this? We have a motion to approve the recommend that the council approve the ordinance variance as specified in the packet and in the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, carries unanimously. Thank you. And we have closed the public hearing, so we'll move to the next one. The second public hearing is not a rezoning matter. It's not a variance. It is a recommendation on an ordinance to revise and amend Appendix A of the unit of the UDC and for the purposes as stated therein. I'm going to, we will have opportunity for public comment. I'm going to suggest this for the approach on this. It's a, it's a very detailed set of of recommendations. And we're going to hear from the consultant that was hired by the company that was hired by the city to do this. And I think that we should start out with the consultant describing the changes. And during that time period, I think for efficiency's sake, I would suggest council members can ask questions for clarification of the of of what she's describing, but I would strongly suggest that what we do is we hold opinions, we hold discussion until after the public hearing. So the process is that she'll describe it. If there are questions while she's describing it, I think we can go ahead and and handle those from at that time. But again, I would not I don't think it would be appropriate for us to to have opinions or comments or I'm in favor of this, I'm not in favor of that. I think we save that for the discussion after the, after the public comment period. If that works for everybody, I think we should proceed. That's today? Yeah. Okay. Yeah. Well, this is the, yeah, this is the public, this is public hearing. And the same rules apply. Do we have anybody signed up for comment?
No.
Okay, well, that may simplify it. So we may move pretty quickly through it. So we've introduced the topic. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing and we will consider your, if you introduce yourself. So the public hearing is open. And you are maybe our only speaker.
Okay, great. Good evening. I'm Shannon Kettering. I'm with Kettering Plus Planning at the station. And as many of you know, myself and our team of consultants have been working with staff to revise and amend the city's unified development code to ensure that it is is remains the intent or remains in line with the the intent vision of your comprehensive to address any concerns that staff, council, and yourselves may have had or that were identified over a series of conversations that we had with all of you starting in March. And so I'm here tonight to present the recommended amendments. Now, I believe you all have a packet in front of you that's a summary document of the of the changes and actually the of the recommended amendment and they're completed by sections. Topical sections. And I was going to walk through, I won't read it out to you, but I'll actually let you know where the actual revision is. So I'll, we'll just start though with identifying each section and the intent and then the revision, and then I'll pause and see if anyone does have any questions for clarification. So section number one is the timing of open space preservation during the development process. It's the intent of this revision to clarify language and to revise the city's development regulations to ensure that preservation is concurrent with development phases in order to accomplish the city's future conservation strategy. So the summary revisions, the revised language as necessary, and that language occurs in subsection one A, specifically A one and A four and subsection one B. Then the second bullet code requires open space preservation concurrent with building completion by phase in the VL Village, Hamlet, HM, and Historic Crossroads HC districts. That subsection one C concurrency. This clarifies the concurrency requirement in order to ensure that eighty percent open space preservation occurs concurrent with eighty percent of the issuance of building permits.
Sharon, if I may, for clarification, the the comment that you're putting in here as your summary thing, revised language is necessary. So for example, there are certain words that are changed.
That's correct.
Throughout, like, for example, in subsection one A of the code, you've changed open to undeveloped.
That's correct.
For example.
Correct.
And those rather I don't know tweaking is the right word, but they're improving clarification, whatever.
Correct.
They're not what you would consider the major thrust of of the changes.
No.
But they were necessary as you went through with with staff and other folks in the council. You thought these were important, but I think if I'm reading this correctly, what you're focusing on are some of the major changes for this.
Right. I just wanted to make certain I was just clear with the fact that there are some revised words within the sections.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, if I move on to section two?
So the yeah, sure, sure. You go ahead.
Okay. Section two, higher review standards to improve development feasibility. The intent is of this revision is to reduce cities' risk and staff effort and expense on speculative and feasible projects, especially relative to developers' ability to provide infrastructure. Bullet one, code requires specific information regarding the proposed application such as utility availability and feasibility as well as details concerning phasing, timing, development partners, and funding. You'll find that in subsection two A with the additional requirements of the applicant detailed in both number nine and number ten of two A. Absolutely.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Yeah, absolutely.
In more detail about development partners and funding. What what exactly information is going to be required of the development partners and funding?
Well, again, just as it stated, it's just an information winning, you know, that clarifies exactly what's written there. What is the process? Who else are they working with? And what is their funding that they are recommending or that they're, you know, stating they're going to have? There's no way, though, by law to actually require anything much deeper than that. It was recommended from our attorney that your city attorney not, that you can't go much further than asking for the information. In other words, you can't set an amount that you expect them to meet with regards to funding. You can ask for the information, though.
Well, what about background and history and of the developer and the partners?
That's not what we're proposing at this time.
And so to be specific, if you want to take a look at the actual attachment, that's the code section. If you look at page four of the, not the summary, but the actual attachment, you look at page four, what's being added are items nine and ten.
Correct.
I I read that.
Well, I'm doing it.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Not just for you.
The concern is.
Again, let's, let's hold that for the end. All right. We're asking for clarifications of the presentation. Please go ahead.
Okay. Section three, buffer requirements. It's the intent of this revision to clarify language and to consider conditions where buffers may or may not be permitted within the city as a means of balancing limited growth areas with the allowance of amenities and services as identified on the comprehensive plan. The summary of revisions, number one or bullet one, revised language as necessary and an additional illustration. So the revised language occurs in subsection three B. And that's specifically F one, F three, and F six. And then there, there's an additional illustration, which is figure five dash eight, F six, which illustrates the buffer exemption number six.
And the illustration appears on page five of the attachment.
Correct.
The illustrations are very helpful.
Wonderful.
Sorry, I wasn't supposed to do that.
Second bullet, code requires a buffer on property adjacent to a city boundary. You'll find that in subsection three A. That's the last entry in the table. And that's requiring a buffer of seventy five feet for development adjacent to a city boundary. Third bullet, code allows a buffer exemption in the Village VL or Hamlet HM districts along non scenic roads and excluding South Fulton Parkway with design standards, and that council may determine alternative standards in certain situations per specific conditions. So let me break that down. Subsection three B, number six, is the city's primary buffer exception in the VL or HM district along a non scenic road except for South Fulton Parkway for a maximum of five hundred feet for VL districts and two hundred and fifty feet for HM districts, and now includes an illustration for clarity as we identified. Subsection three B, number seven, clarifies that council has the ability to provide alternative standards for buffer exemptions along non scenic roads within the city with conditions. And then the last bullet, code allows a buffer exemption in the Village VL or Hamlet HM districts for agricultural uses that are visible from an adjacent property or thoroughfare with design standards and all other uses must be screened from view. That's subsection three B, number eight. Section number four, subdivision of lots and minimum lot size in the rural RL district. The intent of this revision is to clarify language and to modify the requirements for farmet subdivisions and family lots to maintain the rural character of the city and minimize aesthetic and other impacts associated with the subdivision of lots for the comprehensive plan. Bullet one, revised language as necessary. That revised language occurs in subsection four A and four B. In four A, the revised language is found within the table itself. So it removes the separate references of Hamley, Hamlet mixed use and Hamlet residential. And it revises the minimum non residential area per gross acre within the VL district to one hundred square feet. And in C two, which is below the table, the code now requires the applicant to include a DTC agreement at the time of preliminary plating. The revised language found in subsection four B, for clarity, the lot size regulations are written in sentence form versus within a table with asterisks is what, which is what it was currently.
Shannon, just one thing. And peppered throughout her, you just, I think for the first time alluded to it, is one of the Hamlet districts is being eliminated by this.
That's correct, and I'll actually discuss that. No, no problem. I'll discuss that in section five. Yep, but thank you. Revised language in subsection four E clarifies the definition of a minor subdivision as five or fewer lots. The second bullet code specifies additional requirements for farmet subdivisions and family lots and requires these specifications to be indicated on the final plat. Subsection four C, farmet subdivisions. A clarifies the process for creation of a farmet, i.e. minor or major subdivision process. D requires farmets to meet buffer requirements of subsection five.
He would, I'm sorry. Back to the family lots for a moment. In eleven dash six A, it looks like there's a change that changes the number of lots that can be created.
Yes, I'm just I'll get, I'm almost there.
I thought you would pass that. I apologize.
That's okay. No, that's okay.
I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm in subsection four C, farmet subdivisions.
Okay, sorry.
No problem. Again, A clarifies the process for creation of a farmet, i.e. minor or major subdivision process. D requires farmets to meet buffer requirements of subsection five dash eight E. E and F specifies requirements concerning maximum land disturbance for both residential uses and agricultural structures. G requires a conservation easement for the portion of the property that is outside of the residential use disturbance area. Then subsection four D, family lots. A clarifies that one family lot may be created from any property existing on January first, two thousand and seven. And G requires specific language to be included on the family lot deed.
And what was that previously? On A?
It was three.
So it reduces three to one.
Yes, correct. Subsection four F, additional plat requirements indicated in the last row of that table. You have the full table included in your packet, but in the last row, it identifies that specific provisions pertaining to the farmet subdivision and family lots are to be the requirement of the final plat.
So just to, just to clarify, on on that whole table.
Yes, it's just the.
It's just the very last.
Very last one.
The very last row.
Correct. And it's really just saying that the conditions of four C D and E and four D B E F now also need to be identified on the final plat. And Doug, I'm sorry if I did interrupt you at all. And Doug, I'm sorry if I did interrupt you at all. Did you have any other questions about four D? Okay.
I'm interrupting you, I think.
No, you're doing great. Okay, so, okay, we are now in section five, which is what you had alluded to. It's the intent of this revision, which is viability and impact of residential hamlets. To clarify language and to eliminate residential hamlet H M R as this zoning district is no longer maintaining rural character or creating walkable centers where people can live, work, play and worship without the use of the car for the city's comprehensive plan. So the summary of this revision is the code deletes any reference to the residential hamlet H M dash R or mixed use hamlet H M dash M U and clarifies all references solely as hamlet H M. So you'll see in subsections five A through five E, which revises the city's zoning districts, required open and civic spaces, district intent, mixed use concurrency and district size regulations to remove any reference to H M dash R and H M dash M U and replaces this language with H M hamlet.
And, and the effect of that is to, um, have all what we previously would have called mixed use hamlets.
Correct.
With commercial.
Correct.
Just.
With residential and non-residential uses.
Correct. Not just residential hamlets.
Correct. Section six, hamlet expansion clustering criteria. It's the intent of this revision to clarify language and to definitively require clustering in the Village, V L or Hamlet, H M districts to facilitate internal connection and buffering, minimize the fragmentation of open space and support the city's comprehensive plan. Summary of revisions, first bullet, revised language as necessary and an additional illustration. The revised language occurs in subsection six B. B dash open space networks. Clarifies that all open space must be at least fifty feet in length and width, except as noted. And additional illustration is figure six dash two A illustrating clustering and district conservation lot standards. Second bullet, code requires clustering standards for both residential and mixed use clustering with specified exemptions, including a maximum distance for single family and commercial lots and district conservation lots, which require an increase in open space preservation and a limitation of acreage. Subsection six A clustering. Capital A two, lowercase a through lowercase c clarifies residential and mixed use clustering requirements within V L and H M districts. Capital A two, lowercase d specifies exemptions to the clustering requirement in four specific conditions. Capital A three requires additional conditions for the district conservation lot exemption and includes an illustration.
The illustration being on page seventeen. Figure six dash two A, correct?
Correct. Section seven, reviewing modifying the allowed uses within the rural R L district. It's the intent of this revision to clarify language and to increase parcel size for specific uses indicated on the permitted use table within the rural R L district and to update certain requirements within specific supplemental use provisions. Summary of revisions, the first bullet, revised language as necessary, including revising gas station to fueling station. That revised language occurs in subsection seven A and seven B. In subsection seven A, B time limits, the revision is simply one word from end to on in the second sentence. In subsection seven B clarifies the use definition of fueling stations. Second bullet, code requires a specific parcel size for the following uses in the R L district.
Hang on a second.
Yes.
Um, fueling station, gas station, the fueling station. It looks like that's for alternative.
Fuels.
Part that's.
Exactly. Well, but it would cover gas as well, but it's also inclusive now of alternative fuels.
You could, yeah, okay.
Second bullet, code requires a specific parcel size for the following uses in the R L district. Country and recreational vehicle, R V or campground, college, university or professional school, motion picture or sound recording facility, event center large, air transportation, airport private. And I'll walk you through that. In subsection seven C dash H in the permitted use table. It revises the parcel size, excuse me, it revises the parcel sizes for the permitted uses specified above. Specifically identifying a parcel size of seventy acres or more for the following. Recreational vehicle, R V or campground, motion picture or sound recording facility, event center large and air transportation, airport private. And now requires a parcel size of ten acres or more for country in and college, university or professional school.
Footnotes are what was added on this table. I, I went through it line by line trying to look for things everywhere, but I did things to check for the footnotes.
Right, it, it, exactly. So it'll be the footnote, um, as well. So it is letters, um, letter, the footnote lowercase b, excuse me, and that lowercase b is now added to the, um, certain uses that I just identified, which is recreational vehicle, R V, park or campground, motion picture or sound recording facility, event center large and air transportation, airport private. But I must also note that these, um, footnote of lowercase a has, um, was currently in the code, but has now been added to country in, college, university or professional school. And, um, that's it. I'm sorry. Those two. Third bullet, code specified additional requirements within the following supplemental use provisions. Agricultural retail, air transportation, airport private, festivals or events, occasional, outdoor, indoor, motor vehicle or recreational vehicle sales and rental, outdoor dining, roadside stands, data processing services, gas stations revised to fueling stations. And I'll walk you through those. So that's the additional requirements specified in subsection seven D through seven L. I'll start with seven D, agricultural retail, B one, clarifies percentage of the displayed inventory of the products sold. B four through B five clarifies building sizes based on acreage. Seven E, air transportation, airport private. C one clarifies the distances between the end of the runway and both an adjoining property line of an offsite dwelling and of a property line of any other use, essentially increasing those distances. And C two clarifies the distance between the landing area, building or structure or navigational aid and the adjoining property line, again, increasing the distances.
And on the increase, for example, on one, it went from two hundred feet to a thousand feet.
Exactly.
Okay.
And from zero feet to five hundred feet for any other use. Seven F, festivals or events, occasional, outdoor, indoor. P four clarifies that the minimum lot size and maximum attendance hours are to be as adopted in the city's adopted fee or ordinance. Seven G, motor vehicle or recreational vehicle sales and rental. Z two and Z three clarifies the visibility of vehicles from public and private streets. Seven H, outdoor dining. B B one A clarifies the minimum unobstructed sidewalk clear area along any commercial street, avenue or boulevard thoroughfare type and along other thoroughfare types. And again, this is increases the distance, which is, um, of the unobstructed sidewalk clear area. Seven I roadside stands, M M three clarifies the visibility of temporary sanitary facilities or trash receptacles from any city street. Seven J, data processing services, Y Y two clarifies the conditions associated with data processing services. Seven K, subsection six dash two, F one I, fueling station canopies. Updates gas station to fueling station and relocates this language to subsection seven dash four S ten for consistency. Seven L dash section seven dash four S, fueling stations. Updates gas stations to fueling stations and includes seven dash four S ten as specified above regarding canopies for consistency. Section eight. Additional changes. It's the intent of this revision to address necessary text updates based on city's staff feedback and professional expertise to ensure compatibility of the unified development code and comprehensive plan. Summary of the revisions, revised language as necessary, um, for that, that was just, um, punctuation. The second bullet was code allows residential density in the Village, V L or Hamlet, H M districts to be calculated by either unit size or block net density.
Um, I'd like to take a moment there.
Yes.
And it may be, Mike, you need to weigh in on this. What is the purpose for adding block net density equivalency? What does that, what does that accomplish?
It, what it does is it accomplishes, um, the opportunity to, um, actually incentivize higher density product within the Village, V L or Hamlet, H M districts. And in doing so, um, allows that, um, the benefit or the concurrent benefit of a reduction in the, um, density transfer credits.
Um, and as opposed to, as compared to unit size, I think it, that increases, allows the increase in density.
Yes.
How does that actually work?
It works by block size. Is that what you're asking? Like how they calculate it?
Yeah.
That's exactly how. So they calculate it, calculate it as you'll see, um, uh, in your, uh, table, which is three B A is a footnote, block net density is the total of dwelling units on the block divided by the block area, which is less any open spaces, non-residential uses and thoroughfares. So it's a calculation and it encourages development densities in these areas.
Thank you.
Sure. So the unit size table is unchanged in your packet. The block net density encourages development density as we just discussed in the mixed use districts of H M and V L in order to achieve true open space protection community wide. These density unit allocations are adjusted based on residential unit densities within a block as indicated. When a block and a mixed district developed at a higher density, a reduction in density units is permitted. For density equivalent less than one, requires that a minimum of fifty percent of those density units applied must come from D T Cs or externally sourced T D Rs. Third bullet, code allows residential density in the Village, V L or Hamlet, H M districts to include historic building preservation bonuses. That's found in subsection eight, B two bonuses. Clarifies density bonus for historic building preservation with conditions. Fourth bullet, code specifies additional requirements for lot line adjustments. T D R availability on lots with existing dwellings and for lots reserved for future dwelling sites and fence materials permitted within the city. And I'll walk through those. Subsection eight, C, A two, lot line adjustments. Clarifies conditions when lot lines of existing properties of twenty acres are smaller or existing properties of twenty acres or larger are adjusted with adjoining properties. Subsection eight, D, E two, T D Rs available. Clarifies that one T D R per existing dwelling is deducted on properties within ascending area. Subsection eight, E H, reservation for future dwelling sites. Clarifies that any additional dwelling site reserved under the conservation instrument on the base area property will reduce the number of T D Rs available by one T D R for each acre or portion that is reserved for residential uses or accessory uses within ascending area. And then subsection eight, F, Q, fence and wall materials. In the last row of the table, it clarifies that metal designed to look like wrought iron is permitted in the R L district or required open space and developable areas. It did delete, delete aluminum. Thank you. But aluminum technically would now be allowed because it's a metal that is designed to look like wrought iron. Correct. You're correct. You're welcome. I was about to say, I think I should stay right here. No, I'm happy to stand.
Any what?
Any yellow cards?
Where I was looking, is there a yellow card to turn in? I looked when I came in.
Oh, there should have been. Um, we know who you are.
Are you for or supporting or?
Well, it's not that simple. It's a big document. I support the majority of it.
Do you want to speak?
Yes.
Okay.
So, uh, would we only, um, please proceed?
Is there anybody, is there anybody else who wants to make a comment?
Steve Nygren, ninety seventy, Selborn Lane. And the most active developer in the city. So, uh, uh, I feel sort of responsibility being up here, uh, representing a lot of the developers that, uh, haven't, they don't follow this, uh, line by line. So, uh, I think, uh, Shannon and her team have done a great job and Shannon's been there since the day one. And so most of this, you know, th- this is really unique zoning, as we know. Uh, for the last twenty years, we scared most developers away. Uh, so we, we haven't had the traditional development. But I think we have to be careful that we don't over regulate from an ideal standpoint, which is what has plagued America in not allowing developers to respond to the topography in the natural area. One of the great pieces of our zoning is the seventy thirty forces density on some level. If a developer is going to maximize, uh, the use of their, uh, development rights. And our buffers basically push all the development behind, uh, a screen versus most cities that are public streets to where anything that a developer does per a block is part of the fabric of that city in a very integral way. Where this is dotted throughout the country, very much like the countryside of England. So it gives a very different, the things you have to worry about in a, in, in a grid city is different out here where you should have a tree bubber. And so it really puts the responsibility on the developer to build something that the market's going to respond to. Uh, and so that's just a general feeling. I think there's, what's happened is because everyone is not an active developer, some of these are unintended consequences, and we've seen this with clustering. We, we, we had, I mean, we changed, this is the third time, and it's made a hundred and eighty returns. So it shows, we, we, we had, we had no clustering requirements. And then we went to twenty percent removed two years or three years ago. And then about two years ago, that got changed to very restrictive that really prohibits most of Serenby as we've known it for twenty years. And now we have some new language that's responded to a lot of my concerns, but it's still so regulated that other developers are going to have trouble. Now, we're grandfathered in on almost all this stuff. My interest is we have workable zoning regulations that other developers that are looking at this. Some of the developers that have things, they, they really did not know about this. They haven't been briefed. We've talked in just the last few days, so we, we might be hearing from some of them. Uh, but for instance, um, if you look at section, uh, six A, uh, that's under clustering, it's under two B. Mixed use clusters must meet the following requirements. Uh, as I read this, this would not allow the crossroads as it is in Serenby. Uh, that's less, it's about eighteen hundred square feet, for instance, of, uh, existing planned commercial. Uh, it's going to be hard, you know, this is ideal. We'd all love to see a lot of commercial in all these places. The reality is, is, is that possible? Uh, and, uh, so I think, you know, we really need to look at what we're accomplishing with that and what it prohibits and how feasible it is. Uh, and then if you scoot over to D, uh, one and two, these, this prohibits, uh, all the lots. all the lots at Serenby. And I think that just before this meeting, I understand that the team is understand they mismeasured things and they are going to change that. But this is where the details. What are we really accomplishing with this level of detail? I appreciate that. I mean, let's look at this. Yeah, yeah. Just to note they'll look at, I think that then on on that section three D little I, I think they intended to have that proximity to include common ownership. Is that what I would presume, but it's not there. And then on the buffer requirements, this is if you have been. This is responding to what we said on clustering, the old thing. I said, look, look at if you drive down Serenby's road. We have buffered almost everything. You don't even see it. That's what we should do. So now these regulations are trying to actually mimic what Serenby did in our format that that comes off of Hutcheson Ferry Road. But this, this does not allow a developer to truly respond to the topography for the best place. And if we're buffering the city's roads, why do we also worry so much about buffering the inside? It's the developer's responsibility to make something that's very desirable. And these kinds of things are prohibiting them from responding to the topography that's within that lot. Sometimes it's on the hill. Where's it going to be the best trees? If there's a stream, where are the public paths going to go? So that that just needs some thought. And I think those, again, here I have a note rushing through here in in six B. It's E or F does not regard topo and then in quickly trying to go through that. Not. So those are some of my comments. It's just that some of these regulations are going to have unintended consequences. And do we, does the city, because of our city buffers, really need to get to this level of detail? Now, pud zoning, which which early on we realized it would simplify things for Mike and everyone. Under pud zoning, especially where there are buffers, you can have a master plan and negotiate that with final approval. So that you're looking at the topography, you're not, the developer is not trying to meet all these measurements and rules. The, the, the development office has final sign off and you can negotiate that. And there's a lot of reasons with topography rather than having to come in for variances because their stream was there, the hill was there, the house is better positioned somewhere. And so that, those are my comments from an active developer who's actually doing this. Thank you.
The public hearing is supposed to include some discussion among the commission members. I think that this point is restricted this.
This is the time to engage with Mike and or and to tell if you're just hanging on a second with specific questions and go on. Typically, we, we do this, and I think it's appropriate to do it with a, under the umbrella of a of a motion. So I will make a motion in a second and then we'll get a seat for a second and then have discussion and if we need to amend, we will. So I will make a motion that we adopt, we follow staff's recommendation and adopt the ordinance. Is there a second before we get into discussion?
I'll second the motion.
So there's been a motion in a second. Let's move to discussion. That doesn't mean we can't amend. It doesn't mean we can't modify. But it's under this umbrella that we we discussed. So let's open it up for discussion. Mitchell, I think I see a presentation.
Yeah. Done a great job. Have I heard what Mr. I said? I suppose to where I'm talking is I really don't think that this is right for the team that is I. I'll get to my position. We are, but in terms of the partners, I started to talk about the partners. What you can do business with. And I mean, that's, that's important. I don't want to do business with people that have been bankrupt or been in foreclosures or can't, or can't buy, will always come in and change things. And then have a, and have a background on thinking. So that's one thing. If my understanding, and again, I'm new here. I've only lived here 14 months. I've been in council for two months, so I'm learning a lot and I'm doing a deep dive a lot, a lot of things. The lots originally, I believe, were for anyone they could sell it to. But now we want to change it to family. I don't quite understand it and let me go in and then I'll tell you where I'm going. And I want to read to you what I assume that none of my council of mission members were read because whatever. So I'm just going to read it to you. Since the relatively brief period of about two months that I had been on the planning and zoning commission, I have heard at numerous hearings the concern by various captain members as to the so-called 20 acre rule restriction. I mean, on the technical term. Just where the citizen generally stands on this issue, I recently went out again and visited with a number of Chat Hill's residents. The, I hate to say this, but it's not, I don't want to separate the Serenby and the non-Serenby, but it's the non- because they're ones that are riskier. Simply put, the overall consensus is that this group, which not surprisingly is made up almost or literally 100% of non-Serenby residents feel that they are, and I'm just going to use quotes, getting the raw end of the deal, not being heard or understood, it's totally unfair, et cetera. I think you get the picture. Most brought up that they couldn't understand why large developers, landowners were getting preferential treatment supposedly allow for very large projects and that theirs was being cast aside. It seems to me that this is an issue that needs to be adequately addressed and now would be a good time for that. And what I would propose is we go out and we meet with the residents, their, I talk with them, they open up to me. We could take two or three months. I mean, I'm willing to do it with whoever wants to go with me. We could go to the churches on a Sunday and sit down and listen what they want. One, one was telling me he had 35 acres. He's retired. He wants to be able to sell it. He can't. And like, why are these two or 300 acre developments or more thousands being sold to outsiders and he can't do it? The next thing is I've been doing a lot of reading on the TDRs. And there are certain documents, if you're interested, I could, one in particular. And I think in this, what we should consider is including reporting requirements for the TDRs. I was shocked when I went to pick up a zoning, not a zoning map, a map from the economic or economic development. I think his name is Chris. Chris? Yeah. And I, and he, he said that I asked him if these maps were on the website and he said, yes. And he showed me how to get the, I he said the zoning map wasn't, but I believe the zoning map is. And then I asked him about the TDR in New York. For a long time, they had developments and I don't know if they still have it, but you'd be able to get online and see a whole spreadsheet on the development rights. When I asked if you had the TDR or DTC spreadsheet, he said, no. And I said, like, why not? From all I've heard since I've been here for 14 months is tens of millions of dollars being transferred between this one and that one. It's critical. And he goes, well, there haven't been that many. And I just think that it's very important that a provision be inserted if we're going to be continuing with TDRs. And if you read the study, there are concerns about it. That was written quite a few years ago. I believe it was 2007. I don't know if it's been updated, but it was a Georgia, Georgia Tech or Georgia State document. That adequate information be provided and updated to the public on the TDRs, who owned it, who bought it, how much, what it relate to, where it is. I'm not an accountant, but I'm sure that we could come up with adequate so that you could go and see exactly what they're talking about. So I would like to table this and give us more time to meet with the residents and hear them out and, and, and see what we can do for them. And make them feel like they're part of it. And also these other issues such as the partners, listening to what Mr. Nygren said about maybe looking at the other provisions that were being inserted, et cetera. So I don't, I would like not to, and, and just table it for future consideration.
Is this recording? Yeah. Okay, great. Just, just a couple of comments. The 20 acre requirement is not as part of this. Whether or not I should get increased or reduced is not part of this recommended ordinance. And so tabling it does nothing. I think at the last council meeting, I heard a very, I thought detailed explanation that that and other changes are coming up in the next comp plan renewal, which happens next year and that there will be detailed discussions, public, they hold hearings with folks where people come in multiple ones. And so I think that is expressly going to be on the table is what I understand Mitch and Mitchell. I'm sorry. Do you go by Mitch or Mitchell? Mitchell, I believe that's on the table and what other folks think are important. So I think there's a process and there's a process coming next year to, and I think it's kicked off in the early part of the year for, for the comp plan update. And I think that that is part of the process to get the whole community engaged as much as possible, not just particular parts of the community.
So I hear you and I'll make you a proposal.
Well, okay.
Move everything until and make it a part of the, why rush into this? Well, let's just, hold on, let me finish. If it's going to be, we're talking at the beginning of the year, we're already four or five months away. Let's include it in the comp that we're doing in February or March and we'll include everything and everyone will feel a part of it. I'm telling you that if we pass this and the, and the, and the citizenry at large, I live in Serenby, I'm not out in with the Chat Hills, but they're going to say, what happened? How did that happen? So let's just push it and include everything, all the good work that Shannon did, we can include it in the new 2025 version.
I appreciate, no, I appreciate that. I don't think it's that simple. I think there are some needs that are important to get addressed now, but that being said, the, what I was addressing was your comment about the 20 acre.
Well, let me ask you, what are the needs that have to be addressed now?
Just hang on, I'm going to address your other thing.
Okay.
And that's the TDRs. And there is the TDR ordinance requires a registry. There aren't million dollar trades going on. There haven't been very any trades going on, to be honest. So the TDR is not active at this point. The, the transferable development rights ordinance is there, it's ready to go, but it's not been active. So there will be a registry, it's required by the code, but there's just nothing to register at this point. So.
Okay, that's the first time I'm hearing that. And I bet if you went around and asked the residents of Serenby and, and outside of Serenby about TDRs, it's very confused. And that would be the first, and they say, we have no idea that it's not being implemented right now.
Thank you for your position. Are there other folks that would like to make comments?
Mr. Chair, if possible, to, to give more explanation, I guess you indicated that the is not included in this change. I guess at what was discussed.
Could you, could you talk to us about that?
About, you know, the 20 acres not being in this change, but exactly the things that are being the only thing that really changed in 11.6 family lots, Shannon, if I have have it correctly, would be paragraph, sub paragraphs A and G. Is that correct? So I'm on page eight, on page eight.
So you are correct that this revision to the UDC does not have any recommendation to change the 20 acre lot minimum in the rural RL district. So the changes are identified with regards to family lots is just a section, a subsection four D is A and B. And then also G, which is about the language in the actual deed. I apologize. Yes.
Okay.
Could you, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Could you explain the process a little more about how this happened, how this came to be?
Sure. So that's a good question. So because I didn't go into the background. So it is pretty typical that you as a council and commission would update your zoning code approximately every two to three years, just to insert, just to be sure that there aren't any inconsistencies with regards to your, your regulatory policies. You also might want to update things like tables, visual diagrams. You want to make certain your language is consistent. You might want to also update definitions like gas station to fueling station. But there was also a retreat or I guess I would say, yeah, retreat between council and commission in March where we engaged in a number of exercises to identify what other issues or concerns both the council and the commission might have with regards to current regulatory policies and how they are either they are or not being supported or, or are supporting the comprehensive plan. And with regards to the 20 acre minimum, that is specific within your comprehensive plan. So that would require quite an update to your comprehensive plan to make that change. Not that that isn't possible. But a comprehensive plan is updated every five years and that projects out to your community 20 to 25 years and you all do have one upcoming. And that would be an opportunity to have large policy conversations such as that one.
Thank you. Mr. Morton, you, your staff recommendation is to go forward with this. And I take it that means you were deeply involved in this process and had a lot of input in it? Okay, the staff was, all right. In addition to just council members, commission members and others.
Another question, Mr. Chair. So I know there's a motion on the floor. And there was a recommendation made. And you also mentioned that, I guess modifications can be made. So with that motion, it is possible to add
Yes.
a condition regarding those public meetings that have been discussed.
Sure. It's a, we are recommending to the city council. So we can add recommendation to, to the vote. Conditions or whatever, but we can certainly add recommendations. So for example, I think I, I hold this out, I called this out and I think, John, you had spotted it. There's a change in here. I don't quite understand and, and it bothers me a little bit where we went from a three to one family lot.
Yes. Is that correct? Yeah. Section 11 dash six A.
A, right.
And the intent on why we would do that. Why would we go from, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I understand it to be three subdivisions currently for a family lot, up to three, right? But we are reducing it to one.
I was going to add that same.
When we met you with you all during office hours, I know a number of you attended that as well. And so did council. We just received feedback that one was preferred versus three.
Mr. Morton, can you share any light on that? Why it reduced from three to one? Okay. Well, I just wondered if, yeah.
Yeah, no, well, yeah, sorry, I can't.
So it was
It was just feedback collected.
So you, okay. So that's one of the ones that jumped out at me too.
If I may, this is really just pertaining to family lots in existence prior to 2007.
That's correct.
Not sure how many of those are in existence in the city specifically.
No, no one has taken advantage of the family.
No one has taken advantage of it.
And no one has tried to take advantage of this. But there are people who would qualify, I guess, as well. Um, but there are people who would qualify, I guess, as well.
Absolutely.
I thought we had one, um, but they had enough land, they were creating twenty acre lots.
This, I, you know, in my perception, and I mean, I agree with Mitchell, you know, getting feedback from the community. Uh, that's always good. Um. I don't see. This as like a necessary thing, uh, even if nobody's taking advantage of their right to, to do that. Taking away a perceived right certainly could be perceived negatively, and I just don't see the need for that. Um, being that nobody's even taking advantage of it anyway. Um, why not just leave it the way that it is?
Just to answer that question, so you'll see that in B, so neither the resulting family lot nor the original property may be less than three acres in size. So essentially, this would only pertain to anyone with six acres or greater. So they're allowed to um separate with one family lot because the resulting lot would be three acres.
I mean, if somebody had thirty-six acre, they would. Have a conforming lot, but would not be able to divide into two twenty acre lots, but they, right, if they in the current zoning, they would be able to make three twelve acre lots. Right now?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, the family lots.
Yeah, just the family lot, but you couldn't sell that to anyone other than family. That's correct. That's correct.
But also if they only had nine lots, I mean, nine acres, they could do currently three, three acre lots.
That's correct.
As family, that's right, restricted, right, that's right.
And that, that, as I remember that, the family lots provision was. Addressed the specific concern with twenty acres. Um, actually misremembering this, uh, because people saying, well, I've been here a long time, my family's here, I want to pass it along to my children. And so a- and it was from that that I think that arose, that sort of discussion from public meetings. And so, um, yes, I, I mean, I think, I think that we can premise uh this on the fact that. We'll, we'll have to talk about that a little more, figure out how we draft it. I think it's worthwhile, and I know I'm not ignoring what you said about this. I think we. Come back to that about tabling it. Um, and maybe that's a separate uh amendment, but. But I would like to get some input about specific questions about what's been proposed here. There are other specific concerns.
I can go through my notes. Well, I mean, just since we're talking the twenty acres and the. Family lots, I mean, I do think. Current. Um, twenty acre language is problematic. I think our. Our family lots, it's that whole concept, it's got its own problems in, in my mind, it's kind of. Separating, treating people differently. Uh. But there was a draft that was shared during the open office hours that would have changed both of these provisions, but didn't make it into this. Version, and I just, I, I supported that draft language that. I don't, I don't have it because it was, it was just a draft, it wasn't anything official, but uh. This language, I don't, I don't like this language compared to the draft language that gave everybody more flexibility and retain. Control to keep people from doing a, a lot of stuff that people want to.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I. Is the reason that that went away because that twenty acre language is in the comp plan?
I think the best answer for that is again, with regards to um the creation of multiple lots. Out of a large lot. Property, then you, exactly right, you wouldn't have the twenty acre minimum. And so there didn't seem to be support. From the majority with regards to allowing several three acre lots out of. Different size lots that are currently larger. So you're correct. Then again, that, just to be clear, that was a proposition with regards to our recommendation. To get feedback on with regards to properties that were January first, two thousand and seven. So not just to be clear, it's, it's the same. As.
Only in the family lot section, that draft language.
No, it's just in the family lot conversation.
But I, I take it from your comment that you are not uh in favor of the format. Or I mean, not part of the uh family lot provision.
Yeah, with the. With the changes that were being proposed, I was expecting to see some changes to the twenty. Acre, a, a changing of that current language to make it a little bit more fair to everybody. And that, and it didn't, like you said, it's not part of it.
But not beyond the family lots?
Not in the lot size regulations.
Yeah, which is not uh in these proposals.
It's not in these, that's what I was surprised about.
Okay, so again, it's the same comment about the twenty acre uh maximum, minimum. Sub uh, lot size for subdivision, right? So that's, okay, so it's not particular to the family lot.
It's not specific to the family.
Okay, alright, now I get it.
Is it possible? Since that one section is such a hang up to revise, let me say that. Scratch that section currently.
Which section, the existing twenty lot?
They know just the whole section of eleven point six family lots to like. Move forward with the ready for the document, but scratch that one. Item off, that one seems.
It, it needs possible for a recommendation. What I'm not, um, what I'm not hearing is if that's, if that's actually the problem. Uh, isn't the family loss section revisions that are the issue, or is it the larger issue about. Uh, that's separate twenty acre subdivision part.
Uh, well, I've heard the fellow uh members and, and, and since they pointed out this three family lot. Language compared to one family lot language, I, I, I tend to uh agree with some of the discussion that's had, that's taken place along family lots too. But my, my bigger comment, it's all. You know, explosion of changes to six, three. Is, is more not, my hang up, that I was expecting to see that language. But I, I didn't mean mixed topics, but I do think they're kind of related because family lots were added, it compensate for. The twenty acre language being added, so.
Okay, uh, I'm, I'm hearing that. I'm not sure that, um, yeah, I know you said it's not right, but. I, I'm really not sure that since it's not being recommended for any changes to the twenty acre, and I'm not setting. I think the three to one on the family lots is odd, and I'm not sure I can justify that, but. Uh, but in terms of the twenty acre, if we do nothing on this, it stays where it is, so. And it's going to stay where it is, I think, until the comprehensive plan process, so. And that's a good forum for doing that change. And I understand, Mitchell, you say, well, let's just wait and hold everything up for that. I'm not.
I'm asking a different question, I'm asking, um, why the rush?
Well, because there's a perception by staff and the, I guess it's a, it's a consensus that these are important changes to make. Um, and that they should be made. So I'm not sure it just. Well, there's part of the step.
What's, what's the rush?
Um, it's not just Mike, I mean, this, this is, who, is a consensus of whom, um. Uh, Shannon, the consensus again, uh, who's the consensus from?
So we were asked to come in and take a look at your unified development code and to identify where are the inconsistencies. Where are their recommendations with regards to updating the code so that it is constantly. Ensuring that you are in line with your comprehensive plan. These are the recommendations that came out of our professional expertise. We also spoke to your city attorney, we've spoken with your staff, we've spoken with members of the council and yourselves to understand where else are you seeing issues? Of concern. And so then in, from that conversation, we identified eight topical sections. Those are the eights that, eight that I've presented to you today. And then we've gone through and identified, okay, here are some recommended changes. And you're right, some of them are small, from undeveloped to open or. You know, punctuation or from in or on, so it's, some of those are small. Um, but I will say that if your code is not constantly updated, then you are at risk for. Perhaps allowing something that you may not want to allow because it's simply allowed by code, and so they're meeting requirements of that. Or there could be other legal ramifications. So it's not uncommon to update your code. As a matter of fact, it's very important to do so. But I understand if you have a problem with a section within the code, that's, that's understandable, but it's not necessarily a rush, it's just smart business.
Oh, I understand that. And you guys have done a great job. But we're so close, looking at the whole thing. And uh, in what we're saying, um. Recommendations, the staff recommends. The staff must be you and someone.
Right, in most cases, staff would be you.
Okay, so.
Right, so there, so, so there, there are a number of provisions that, um, that council has identified, well, council and planning commission, I guess. Um, has identified that, um, they thought need to be changed, the um, residential hamlets. Um, uh, some of the clustering requirements.
Timing of open space.
And things, right, and so if we get applications in before changing them, then we get some things that have been identified by councils that we don't want. And so the idea is to go ahead and get the changes in so that you don't get things that council identified they don't want.
So we need a few questions.
Okay.
It didn't sound to me like you spoke to anyone outside of the government, not, not the residents. In your opinion, if you do a stat based on what I'm telling people, would that maybe have resulted in something different? If you spoke to a hundred or two hundred, I've spoken to about a hundred people, and this is what they're telling me. With that in mind, what you're writing, because you, you didn't speak to the people that this directly affect. I'm not talking about the developer, I'm a developer. No, I, I know. I know when they, when they buy it. Things can always change, but when it comes to the. Landowner, you can't change for that, that's how they are. I'm saying, let's take our time and just keep it that. There, there aren't that many people. It's not like we have thirty, forty thousand, I think the population is about, what, thirty-two hundred? It just won't really affect the Saranby residents. He's talking about the non. Right?
No, 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 we're talking about all the residents of the city.
No, I understand, but it's not affecting.
Well, it, it very well may, that's all I mean.
Well, that, that, right, it may, we get them all together and you're amazed when you sit and talk to them, what they're telling you, it's like, wow, that, that makes sense. It just makes sense.
And there's been a long history of that in this community, a really long history.
Now, the ones that are here for twenty, thirty, forty, a hundred years, they're saying, yeah, like, why is this happening to us?
Well, um, let me, let me ask, uh, if there are other specific, I will come back to that, if there are other specific issues in this ordinance. Like the three, changing three to one of the family, are there other specific things that anyone has they would like to discuss?
Two minor graphic items. I don't want to interrupt the flow of discussion.
Go ahead.
Okay, uh, one, uh, in section six A, where we're talking about. Generally agree with the idea that we're trying to better define what. And A to B two, so we're talking about use clusters and what they must, they must be. It's all our apartments. Uh, the cluster must obtain at least a hundred existing or planned dwelling units. Um, is, is it safe to assume that if they're developing a hamlet for a village that. They would have dwelling units to cluster? I mean, if it's less than a hundred units, do we need to give them some sort of. Relief or something that would. Is it the intent to?
Well, Mike, how realistic is that we get a hamlet or a village less than a hundred?
It's an interesting question, right? Because with a two hundred acre minimum, there wouldn't be a hamlet with less entitlement than a hundred units, but I get what you're saying, they might not want to use up all. All the, all of their entitlement. Um. So i- in that case, I would say that, um, because some of the other, and Shannon, help me here.
Yeah.
Um, because some of the other, um, uh, parts of this section sort of hang off the, is that mixed use cluster sort of your base unit? Within those districts, and then you can have some separation, have some other clusters, some things that aren't clustered, that's kind of the base unit. If you were to be, if you were staying below that hundred unit threshold, um, um, my interpretation as written right now, sitting here would be. You can still do that with your, um, uh, your cluster of under, under a hundred units, but. Lacking a cluster that meets the mixed use requirements, you wouldn't be allowed to do those other things that require the mixed use cluster. So you would be bound to just that one cluster, which is fall short of a mixed use cluster, but the other things that you have to. That rely, that depend on the preexistence of a mixed use cluster in order for you to do them, you just wouldn't be able to do.
Wouldn't be allowed the exceptions.
This, this is the intentional language is.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And, and in practicality, playing out. And we'll put it in maybe simplified language for common people. That just means it wouldn't allow for like commercial if it's less than one hundred units. Like, that's the, the mixed use part now?
No, no, you are allowed to have commercial, it's saying actually must have at least twenty-five hundred square feet to be considered. A mixed use cluster versus a residential cluster. And hamlets by definition have non-residential uses.
Right, but.
Otherwise, it would be called a residential cluster.
Must contain at least one hundred existing planned dwelling units, right?
Right.
B one and B two kind of. Click together.
That, that makes you a mixed use. Otherwise, you would turn the page to C and your residential cluster. Is identified as any cluster that has twenty dwelling units and no res, and no non-res. It's just helping to define the difference between a mixed use cluster and a residential cluster. Does that help?
Still be bound, because it's a hamlet, you'd still be bound to do some commercial space, but it just wouldn't. Wouldn't meet the threshold to be defined as a mixed use.
Well, you could do several clusters, right? Each cluster must be at least twenty-five hundred square feet and then a hundred land dwelling units, and then you could have another. Mixed use cluster that is a part of your plan.
And then another thing, I couldn't tell if it was intentional or not, under. In the same section in clustering, we got two, A, B, C and D, and D is the exception.
That's correct.
But because D is under. Two. Reads to me like these exceptions. Exempt somebody from the whole requirement. Should these bullet points uh be under. Two A is the note I wrote, I have no idea if that's the right place or.
Well, would you go through that again? I'm, I'm not sure I'll get it.
Yeah, so I'm just wondering from, again, this is a graphic thing. The exceptions are in E.
On page, on page fourteen.
On page fourteen, right? So B is a sub bullet two, so I'm thinking that accepts them from the standards that apply within the hamlet. So you've just, did, did we mean to. Exempt them from all these requirements, or is that provision, that exception supposed to be a sub bullet under? One of the other.
So they.
Talk about all the exceptions or specific.
So, so, so the way it's set up and, and. Uh, you can tell me if you think from what I'm saying, if you think it does mean that, the, the, it's set up to um define a clustering requirements. And then we, we define a mixed use cluster, um, which is again, that sort of base unit, then the residential clusters, which require a mixed use cluster. Um, and those are the two kinds of clusters. So what we've said so far is that everything has to be in clusters. And then we offer the exceptions and up to ten percent of the lots can be not connected in the cluster, but within fifty feet. Up to four percent, again, not connected directly to the clusters, but within a hundred and fifty feet. And then the district conservation lots, which are out there, um, even, even farther away. So what we did was set up the, the kinds of clusters, they have to be touching, all, every, everything has to be touching or right across the street. And then you can also. And then you can also do this other stuff that, so these are exceptions, yes, to those requirements, but only limited ten percent, four percent. The district conservation lots, if you look down at number three, which it gets into those further, have their own limits. And then D I V just talks about commercial. How you can have up to five percent of your commercial lots may be disconnected in that way. So yes, those are exceptions to the clustering requirements.
Last kind of drafting comment, sorry.
Did you, does that?
It does satisfy my question. Yeah, thank you. Somebody else can go if they need to.
And this really is playing out in the diagram or the picture on page seventeen.
That's correct. That's correct. Figure six dash two A illustrates the clustering as well as the, the exemptions. How to identify that as well as the district conservation lots.
My last drafting question, subsection four F on page nine, we've got our flat requirements.
Okay.
Previously, we said we wanted proof of D T C. Preliminary plat is one of these line items correspond to that action. Should we include that as a line item here?
So that wasn't included, no.
It, it wouldn't be required for all preliminary plats, but we could, it's not a bad idea to include it in the table. It would be a per zoning administrator because it's only going to happen, or if required. Right, right. Because it's not required in all cases because they don't all involve D T Cs. Not a bad idea to add it to the table.
Just a point of order, if there's no other comments.
Well, that's one we need to hear.
Oh, okay.
Anybody want to discuss section eight or we, we, we done here? I just, my comment on section eight was just about the, the table kind of giving people. Instead of credit being one to one, they're, they're calculated based on this table. The density equivalence table.
That's correct.
Page twenty five. And this isn't really a technical question. I think this was more just a question for the for planning commission. Support this or not? When I, I read this, I, I, I was not in favor of this. I know, I get the importance of trying to encourage and spur to action, kind of this T D R process, but you know, I think just keeping things simple one to one. Or something I would support.
I'm not sure. You're talking about the, the block net density equivalency table?
I am, yeah.
And I'm sorry, I'm not trying to be argumentative. I'm not sure I'm understanding your comment.
My comment is this, this table, as I understand it, is intended to give people kind of a want to use the word bonus, but they, they get more development than the credits that they bought to encourage. You know, higher density, and I'm not against higher density, I, but buying a higher density, but I did, I, I, I would prefer to see something just more one to one. Credit, one credit, you know. One unit, one credit, no.
Well, I, I think the reasoning for that is to incentivize taking advantage of the T D R program, which then you would buy T D Rs from outside the area you're trying to develop, right? And that would then help lock down the rural character of chat hills, right? Because if you're able to get more T D Rs outside, it would be beneficial for developer to do that. And at the same time, it would promote the clustering and the dense building and while locking up not allowing for any future development in the rural districts.
Think, am I reading this backwards? This, this allows you to go out and purchase. If, if you're doing a, a unit that's five hundred square feet or less, you only have to buy a happy instead of a whole year.
This, the size provision.
Barring as many credits to be bought or, or rights to get a certain level of density. I understand the intent, but I would prefer to see one to one.
So the three A is current language that's in there today. Three B is new, so the unit size equivalency is, is current. Block net density is proposed and new. The requirement for the D T Cs is in a underneath, in a footnote of the, the table in B, so it actually doesn't apply to the unit size equivalency, which is maybe not a bad idea. So it's a, it's a higher bar than we, we currently have, but it wasn't actually a part of the discussion there, but maybe not a bad.
But I'm not sure that's addressing your comment. You, you don't want the.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure. I realize A was already.
No, A is already there. The unit size is already in there. The block, the block net density equivalency value.
I think maybe what it was is that table was, didn't print out or something I might have said missing, but there was a heading for it.
I think it is funny. It's off to the right on the, in MUNICODE. It's kind of, yeah, it lays out funny. You're right.
Okay, okay, we're going to come to amendments in a second, but I do have a question for Mr. Nygren. You had said that there was a provision that was being talked about, about being changed. And I didn't quite follow that, one of these items.
That, that would be another section.
Yeah, not in this, no, not in this section. Yeah, please.
One thing I need to say here, on that, if I may. The inactive, if you look at some of the plans being approved. You're not seeing some of the high density that you see at San, because there's really no bonus to it. And if we're looking at affordability, if this moves forward. If, if, if we don't put some incentive for smaller, like half.
Point five, you're going to get most developers putting bigger lots because if, if it's, your development right is a development right. And so if you can, if, if there's the same value to putting it on a small, less expensive house versus a very expensive house, most developers are going to put on the expensive house and we're going to end up with a city without any smaller units. And I think this was the biggest intent to do that is to incent smaller units because that doesn't exist right now. And we're seeing what's coming down. No one's doing that.
Thank you.
That's right. Where I was talking about is it's in. And I got it, yeah, it's it is in, it's in D one, let me see what, it's on page fourteen. And I have some issues with the ten percent and the four percent, but what they have admitted is they were scaling incorrectly in the fifty and the one hundred and fifty are incorrect. And I got that note from just before we came in here. I still have issues with the trying to regulate, we, we, we're really, if we think Mike's buried now, wait until he starts figuring out a lot of this stuff that we've had.
Okay, so the, in the, Shannon, are you aware of this discussion? And so what is the discussion if it goes, if you can't realize it's not.
So the discussion is, it's important to ensure that we are being clear about what actually is a cluster. And allowing though, at the same time, the opportunity to address, as Mr. Nygren said, topography and changes that do occur during the actual development process. And so just conversation about maybe fifty feet and a hundred and fifty feet aren't allowing enough of some flexibility with regards to how varied the topography is here in the city. And so that maybe there needs to be actually larger distance between the mixed use cluster for certain percentages of the total single family lots. So that you can be more responsive to changes in topography. Sure.
I'm going to summarize where I think we are. And then let's talk about amendments. One of the, one of the proposals is to be able to hold them. And we can entertain amendments and then further discuss those. The second thing that I think I've been hearing here, and you tell me if I've got it right here, are specific concerns about some of the provisions. One of those that I'm hearing is good bit are. One is the three to one. And I'm hearing a good concern about that. A second is something to make sure that if we're expecting a public process to deal with the twenty acres, with the twenty. Which I, again, I don't think is going to be a surprise. I think that what I've heard, well, it was public council meeting last week. That that is the intent, but the third one is to include the D T C requirement in the table in four F, is that correct?
Yeah, do we say that? Yes, we can include that.
Okay, that was, that's in the, in the.
Yeah, yeah, requirement's going to exist either way, but it just would have to be helpful for administratively, when you're going through your checklist.
And then I think there's the concern about in the cluster rules about including about the fifty and one hundred foot, fifty foot and one hundred and fifty foot requirements of exceptional limitations and the exceptions that they may not be aggressive enough. So that apparently is under consideration right now. So it is, that's an item that is probably worth, worth noting. So now that's the list I've got. Does anybody have any other specifics in there?
I could have missed. Would it be a way to include a reporting on the T T Cs?
It's already in there. I think if you look at the article thirteen of the T D R, you'll see that the registry is required and that there are absolutely reporting requirements that the, whoever, even if it's a private party, private sale, they have to clear it through the city. For it to become a, a T D R, actually, a qualifying T D R, it's got to go through the zoning administrator. And, and it, it's a private, private transaction, but the city tracks it. And the city has to know where they are and there will not only be, well, there's a requirement for a registry and if it becomes robust enough, there'll be a bank as well.
Right.
But all of that is in article thirteen, all those provisions are. So I think if you look at article thirteen of the U D C, it's pretty well spelled out.
But someone can't get on the website and bring up a chart.
Not today because there's nothing to see. At the foundation of the, in fact, back over a decade ago, there were twenty one T D Rs sold that were part of the, almost should we say a, a pilot study for the T D R program, but that's it.
They, they were created by the county. They weren't created by the city.
Correct. Oh, they can. I think that's an administrative, right, right? That's something that you really have to develop the registry and that's. But I, I think it's just part of the registry when it goes up. Mitchell, but at this point, we're, we're still trying to get our first current, modern era T D R. So development rights and it may be. I, I, that's a good idea. Of course you need that. But that's, I think you'll find provisions for that are contemplated and required. Did I get the?
So, so those.
In whatever form we put them in, yeah. So for example, say, we approve, but we think that the three that they've got to go back to, that that change should not be made. The, the change from three to one should not be made, that it should remain as it is. That would be that, so I think we would need to talk. But I think we, so here's, here's question, we're at a point, I think, now, did I, first of all, did I miss something in there in the discussion? I think, okay, so I think it's time for any, we have a motion on the floor that's been secondary, but it, it also can be amendments to it. So if anyone would like to propose an amendment to that, this would be the topic. If you want to propose an amendment, delay the whole thing.
I, I propose that.
Okay, why don't you go ahead and say what you want to do?
Motion for the, I'm not crazy.
Amendment.
Amended to table.
Is there a second for that motion? Hearing no second, I think the motion fails. So now I think would be the time for any other amendments, for example, with these several things. And I think we need to talk through, make sure we get the language right. So I, I will go ahead and make a motion to amend my, my motion that was, that's on the floor. That we amended to include certain conditions that we need to talk about it right here. And we can go through them specifically now or we can go ahead and, well, let's go ahead and throw an amendment right. So I think the amendment would be, but I'm going to need some help in fashioning some of the language. So the amendment motion would be to change the, to not accept the provision of family lots.
So that subsection four D on page eight.
Eleven six A. Correct, Mike?
It's great.
That we do not accept that. Our condition would be we do not recommend accepting that provision. That is eleven six.
So if we're, if we're replacing the whole section, you probably want to just replace A with the language you want to see, because otherwise.
No, I, I think what we're just saying is we don't agree with that change. The change is in one thing.
Right. If A were eliminated and the rest of, I think would there would be no.
We just go back to three.
Replacing the whole section, but A is the current.
No more than three family lots, maybe creative property existing or you had.
So what you want to do there is, yeah, which then change one to three in.
My question is on B. Because it says neither the resulting family lot, the original lot may be less than three acres in size, but that that's allowing people to do three, one is a lot. And so two is, I mean, B is a factor as well. Because if we do three, then it's also allowing them to have three money.
So, so the original property there, and maybe we should change the term, is the, I think intended to mean the remainder after you've carved off, no result, well, she should say no resultant lot.
Property may be less than three acres in size. The new property, however, may be be amended to be less than three acres. And that's actually for your current.
So that's.
Yeah, it does. It's just the idea that there could be three, three acre lots out of a nine acre split is extreme.
And that's in the.
This is one of the topics you brought up. So any thoughts on that, that there can be three, three acre lots possible?
I know it's possible. I guess again, we have to look at the odds and statistics of this, right? Like one, again, no, no family splits have happened, correct? How many family lots are actually in existence? Um, that qualify for this, right? Prior to two thousand seven and also being over a certain acreage on top of that. I I think that if the one in a million nine acre lot got split into three, it would probably be the only one. For family purposes. For family purposes. And also I would lean towards that would be appropriate to that landowner. If they are doing that with the intent of their family, which is what this zoning is about, for your family to live on your property. I would have to side with the side of the landowner on that one. So yeah, I don't like the idea of having a bunch of houses all close together as much as the next person, but at the same point, uh, I I think the the odds are pretty slim that that would happen.
Thank you.
There's a second item. It's the public process.
I'm sorry, letter B. Language for a letter B. I would propose going back to the current letter B, which just says no resulting lot may be less than three acres inside since we're talking about it. If if that's the intent, and I'll tell you about interpretation, too. If somebody has twenty nine acres, they can create three, 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 twenty, right? You can still they could create up to four. You would be able to create a fourth lot out of that. And then if they have forty nine, you create a fifth because those are then those are just farm at lots. After that, a two acre property? Nothing. It can't. It can't subdivide. You have to have each resultant last three acres. So you can create two out of three out of nine, four out of twenty nine, five out of forty nine.
Why does the leading the proposed nor the original property?
So I think well, so it clarifies the interpretation of original property as used in your as proposed, don't get me wrong. Original property just means if you have the six acres or whatever it is, you can create the three acre. And then you can't have five acres and create a three and the original property is the whatever you're leaving, right? It was supposed to be one family lot. So it was just intended to say there's a family lot and an original lot. That doesn't have to go to a family member, right? The original, the remainder, that's.
But neither lot.
Correct, right. So right. It's other. It's the other, but they've misinterpreted. They're thinking original means the original before rather than original lot is intended to be family lot plus original lot is your result.
It's confusing. That sounds fine and clarified to me, but we're going to ask you to read it back. Mike, so we're going to ask you to read these conditions back before we go very far.
So what I what I would recommend is is the the current A and B in that section, just using that language, and we can write it out.
Just leave it the way they are.
The current A and B. It sounds like that's what you're saying. Current A says no more than three family lots may be created from any property existing on January first, two thousand seven. Letter B is no resulting lot may be less than three acres inside.
Okay, so just leave it the way it is.
The current.
That will be our proposal. All right. So our recommendation on public process. It the public process on the twenty acre. It it. Do you have a way you would like to say that?
I guess what I was what what I was thinking was that the condition would read something like I would, I guess you could call it community engagement condition and that that this condition would occur during the five year comp review.
That's pretty clear. Did you get that?
That. So so basically, I guess I'm calling it a community engagement condition and that this condition would occur during the five year comp plan review.
Review of that condition.
Yes.
Review of that condition.
Yes.
And that condition of that revision, twenty acre minimum.
Review of the twenty acre minimum lot size. Okay.
That, right. And the third condition would be will you want to address that? This is the DTC and it's more than just DTC, but it's that same.
Try to streamline the language here. Include language in section as related to DTC submitted through proof of DTC requirements at time of preliminary plat.
And where is that? Page nine?
Yeah. Discussing page nine and.
Is the language that you're pulling also in our document here? I'm sorry.
It is. Yeah. On on page seven, very top line for proof of DTC or TDR. Yeah.
Right, right, right. Okay.
And what is the proposal?
What is that language in section?
So it's right. Six, three, C.
Okay, so that's in the table. Got it.
For that reference.
In the table.
I think it'd just be another line item, right? Just another thing that's required.
Sure. And it'll be add an additional row at the end.
Yes.
A new row, and then it will be only under the preliminary plat. It won't have language under construction plans or final plat. And it will be the language there will be as necessary or per zoning administrator. Per zoning administrator. Yeah, yeah.
But I wasn't actually trying to write the language that goes in the red. I'll just leave that to Mike.
Yeah, right. Okay. Good.
And then the other one has to do with the provision the little Roman at I and Roman at two.
Page fourteen.
Yeah.
Middle of the page.
Yes, and under exceptions, it's be Roman at I and Roman at double R. And that would be to.
Do you want to propose numbers or just ask council to revisit?
I I think we need to be I don't think we those numbers here.
To reevaluate.
Please, please reevaluate the fifty and hundred. It's within those two provisions. That was a long way to propose an amendment to the motion, but for clarity, I think, do we all understand it? Do we want Mike to read those back?
Can I read?
Yeah, please read them back. Okay. And so the amendment is it would be to amend the motion on the floor to include the following conditions.
Right. So under subsection four D.
Anyway, I'm just saying. Section eleven, six, A and B will revert to existing language.
Under A and B in that in that section, so they will stay would remain unchanged. The second one is the community engagement condition. Review of the twenty acre lot minimum will be a part of the comp plan revision process. The next one is add the proof of DTC requirement currently proposed in six, three, C, two. Add that into the table. I'm sorry, that's I didn't get the table number, but I know what it is. I'll find it. Under. Yeah. So, yeah, section four, ten, right? So that's four F. Four dash ten. So in the in at in the and at a preliminary plat requirement. And then the requirement would be per zoning administrator. And then finally, on page fourteen, E, I, I, the council will reevaluate the fifty foot and one hundred and fifty foot distance.
Now, I think we've been talking about those as it goes along, but let's let's bring we've had a motion a motion. There's a motion to amend the opens. Is there a second to that? Let's. Is there any further discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor of the motion to amend the original motion, say aye. All those opposed? So the motion carries by majority. Five to one. And this is getting to be higher math for me at this point tonight. So that brings us to the original motion, which is a motion to approve as amended with these conditions, the recommendation to the to the city council to to approve these, this the the ordinance to revise and amend appendix A. We've had a motion second and it's amended. All those, in fact, I think it comes to a vote now. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? You're opposing. Okay, so it's four to two. And that is, I'm sorry.
Three to two.
Two, three, four. Four are in favor, two against.
Oh, sorry. I wasn't counting it.
So the motion carries four to two. And that, I think, brings to close our hearings. And so let's move to the rest of the agenda items. Old business. Is there any old business? None? Any new business? None. So staff reports.
No staff reports.
All right. We've previously done building permits, but I think you're thinking that maybe.
That's right. So, yeah, so in in the past, I've provided the the building permit counts. We present them at all the city council meetings and they're available online. I'll probably I'll plan to present them each year as the year closes. So you can see what we've done for the year. Anyone can access them online, or if you have questions, you can certainly contact me.
Is that satisfactory for the? Okay. Ready to adjourn the meeting? Do I have a motion to adjourn? There a second? All meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.